You want to pass it down?
Do that to.
Excellent. Johnny, too. Councilman, both of them. Oh, he gave it up. Oh, okay. Okay, great. We are back in session after our closed session items. We have no reportable action. We will adjourn the closed session and take a five-minute break. And at 6:04, we will reopen with Selma City Council regular meeting. Well said, City Clerk. Okay, with that, we'll open up our Selma City Council regular meeting. It's March 7, 2022, 6:00 p.m. in the Selma City Council chambers. You can join us in person or through our teleconference phone number, 1301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 870-3419-2466. This meeting is being held in accordance with AB 361 in Government Code Section 54953, which allows the meeting to be held remotely. Members of the public may access the meeting using that teleconference phone number and the webinar ID. Before we have our invocation, can I ask for a moment of silence, please, for the brave people of the Ukraine who are facing a terrible time right now with the onslaught of Russia? Thank you. And we pray for all of the members of the military and all the brave people in Ukraine that they make it through this as a nation. Okay, and with that, we'll have our invocation, which will be led by Pastor Ed Anderson of the Church of God. Okay? If anybody would like to do the invocation tonight, anybody from our veterans who would like to do the invocation? Okay, we'll bring it back. I'll do the prayer tonight. Everyone, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please pray for our city. Pray that this council shows your wisdom and your guidance and the guidance of the people in running this beautiful city and doing what's right for a short and long term, that we respect all peoples, all genders, all ethnicities, all ways of life, and that we go for the greater glory of you in everything that we do. In the name of Jesus Christ our Lord, amen. Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Treheal?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflict of interest. Any council member has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the City Council regarding any item over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item raised during oral communications. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for further review. Speakers are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Any member of the community have any issues they would like to discuss right now? Do we have anybody on the phone or on Zoom?
Reminder to the caller I see online, if you wish to address council, please use the star nine or your raise your hand feature, and we'll add you to the meeting queue. Hi, caller, can you hear us?
Yes, could you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay, awesome. I'd like to address the Mayor Protem Cho, as well as the council members. My name is Naomi Guerrero, and I represent Fresno migrant Head Start. We have a number of centers throughout Fresno County, and they are located in farmworker communities. We have a center in Selma, and it is located directly behind or on the Terry Elementary School premises. And we serve families from zero to five. At this particular center, we have toddlers through five-year-olds. And so we do school readiness when they getting to ready to transition to kindergarten. And I'm here today to talk to the efforts of recruitment, which we are starting, just to see if we're able to perhaps send a flyer to the city clerk. But just to let you know that we will be attending several community events. I've contacted perhaps the Raisin Festival and some food distribution to sort of maybe set up a recruitment booth for the families that we serve.
Thank you. We have any other oral communications tonight? And I'm assuming Ms. Guerrero will send in some written materials or something that the council can see in the community to be posted on the website. Thank you, Ms. Guerrero. Okay, with that, we'll have our special presentation. Forward. So what we're doing tonight? What we're doing tonight is, is this? Can you hear me? No. Oh. Okay, can everybody? I think that's better. Okay, what tonight we're doing, please come on up. We are issuing a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the city for Selma Auto Mall. This is presented to Selma Auto Mall on your award of the Business Journal's Central Valley's Best of Central Valley Business, Best Auto Dealership. The community is proud of your efforts. Presented this seventh day of March 2022 by Mayor Scott Robertson, Mayor Protem Beverly Cho, and Councilmember Sarah Garrett, Blanca Mendoza Navarro, and John Treheal. And I understand this is the third year in a row that you've won this prestigious award. And we wanted to say thank you as a city for all you've given back to the city. Your auto dealership has put us on the map, along with the other auto dealership. And we really appreciate everything you've done for the community, not just for the auto, but everything else. And so on behalf of the city and the city council, I'd like to present you with the certificate of appreciation. Mike Nelson, I hope you'll introduce everybody with you and say a few words.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robertson. So with me tonight are my daughters Amber and Kelly, who are both involved at the Auto Mall and have been for a couple decades, I guess. They've both graduated from the National Automobile Dealer Academy and are successors and next in line to carry on the work that we've been doing here in Selma. Started about 31 years ago, and we're still going strong. The award is greatly appreciated from the city to be acknowledged like this. The young ladies here have been very much involved in helping us achieve these awards, having achieved now three years in a row from the Fresno Business Journal as a top auto dealership in the valley, also being recognized by the Fresno Bee the same way. Our Selma Auto Mall group is ranked in the top 130 in the nation for automobile sales. Just to give you some idea, in 2021, the group, the auto group, did a half a billion dollars of sales through our different dealerships that we have. And we have obviously those six in Selma, one in Visalia, one in Hanford, one in Elk Grove, and the newest one is in Monterey. And so we hire, have about 400 employees, 430 employees currently. And our payroll is, as we understand it, the highest payroll in the Selma area for a private company. We really appreciate everything that Selma has done for us over the years. When we started this back in 1991, if I get the year right, I think it was, 1991, the, the, the whole auto group that we have now started with purchasing the Chevrolet dealership from Mr. Lou Herwalt, who many of you may know that name from Herwalt Mercedes-Benz of Fresno. And we purchased that in 1991. And then from then, we've grown that group of auto, auto dealerships to what we have today. We thank you very much for being recognized and appreciate the support because when we did this, when we started, the City of Selma Council was instrumental in helping us start this auto mall. And without the support of the council at that time, and consistently over the year after year after year, with many different council members, many different mayors, they've continued to support us. And in turn, we've continued to be able to help grow this auto group, which is something that we're proud of. I know the city's proud of. The Selma Auto Mall sign is recognized literally throughout the world. We, one time, had a gentleman that traveled all over and would see our dealer plates identifying Selma, the raisin capital of the world, for us. And so we really, we get a big kick out of seeing that happen. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we will move on to our consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent counter. Does council member, any council members have any item or items they would like to remove tonight?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item E.
Okay, any other items? There are a motion to approve items 1A through D.
I'll make a motion.
There is a second. Call the roll, please.
Member Treheal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro? Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, item E.
On page 45, check number 79004. And it says Employment Development Department, Unemployment from 10/1/21 to 12/31/21, in the amount of $12,675. Tell me what, what that is.
I do have our finance director here, but we, I believe that that's our, our responsibility for the unemployment insurance taxes that are collected for our employee, our payroll. Finance Director, is that correct?
Evening, Council. Yes, that is absolutely correct. That's probably a quarterly bill that comes from the city's contribution to what we're owed, what we owe into that account on a quarterly basis.
Quarterly, okay. Insurance taxes, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah.
Item, are you done, council member?
I am.
Item on page 45, item 79018, IRS Form 941 penalty. It's like a federal DE9, right? What's that all about? Sorry to make you jump up again.
My fault for sitting down. I don't have the backup on that, Mayor, but that is probably something that was delayed in one of our payments, which I'm looking into avoiding that in the future. I don't have the backup for that tonight, but I can put an email together, send it to the city manager for a council distribution.
We also had a lot of voided checks in the past because the description was spilling over. Is that something that you've been made aware of and you're looking at?
I am looking at that, and as well as other stuff that's coming in through the department.
Any other items tonight? Is there a motion to approve item E?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. First item tonight is a public hearing item. Consideration of ordinance amendment to Selma Municipal Code relating to smoke shops and smoking lounges and public exposure of minors to tobacco. This is the first reading and public hearing.
Mayor Robertson, members of the city council, you mentioned a public hearing to consider introduction and ordinance amendments to Selma Municipal Code, Chapter 24, Smoke Shops and Smoking Lounges, definitions, exposure to minors of tobacco products, and Chapter 8 relating to the skate parks, use of tobacco prohibited. If you remember back in December 6 of 2021, the Fresno County Public Health Department provided a presentation on all the variety of new flavors that are, you know, targeting youth, and all the devices that are being used for tobacco. And so one of those areas they discussed is public information meetings, which one has been held at Salzer Center for Parents, and they are working with the Boys and Girls Club for youth. I will say, Lila Golomarizee, if I said that correctly, is here from Fresno County to answer any questions. But this would relate to revising the ordinance for the city, 5-24-1 with tobacco definition and tobacco paraphernalia, 6-24-2 relating to electronic smoking devices, and 9-8.1-11 relating to the skate parks, tobacco product, and smoking. Be the first reading, so we recommend it should be introduced ordinance amendment, and we have the first reading amendment to Chapter 24, Smoking Lounges and Smoke Shops, Exposure to Minors of Tobacco Products, and relating to the skate parks. So any questions, all up to requests from the county?
We'll bring this back to council. Does council have any questions at this time before I open the hearing to the public? With that, the hearing is now open to the public, and I would invite any member of the community who would like to come forward and speak about this issue to do so at this time. Do we have anyone on the phone or on Zoom, City Clerk?
Reminder to the caller that we have on Zoom, please use your raise your hand feature, and we will add you to the meeting queue.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, bring the matter back to council, and ask the council if there are any questions or any discussion points for, for Lila tonight.
I have some questions. I just wanted to confirm.
Do you want to come up?
Hi. Just want to confirm, for our parks. Now, will there be new signs posted in regards to, like, the vaping? Because just, I'm just gonna throw it out there. I know I went to Babe Ruth game last summer, and people were walking around vaping like it was nothing. So that's a concern, you know, concern for me, because there's kids, parents, and I thought they couldn't smoke on a park. But people think vaping isn't smoking.
I believe the signs that we provided you guys when you passed smoke-free parks included the actual, has the no smoking, no vaping, and no drinking signs on the, the signs. So that's one of the things that's a little bit tough about the smoke-free policies, because they are self-enforcing. I do know that we did give you guys some additional signs, so maybe it might be posting some more of the signs up at the parks. That might help as well, because a lot of times people do want to do the right thing, but if they're not seeing signs posted, as, because it's hard with parks, because there's so many different. That's maybe one recommendation.
I think since you brought that up, I think maybe I could reach out to the youth league, so maybe they can do public announcements prior to each of the games, starting each night.
Right.
That might help, too.
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe even that board, the message board that the city has, you know, the seasons are starting, just remember, smoking means vaping, and do it at the, at the games. Are there any enforcement items that are linked to this for the, the code? You know, Lila was saying that, that there are, it's a self-policing policy. If this is broken consistently, would this fall under the, the heading of an administrative citation, or would this be something for the PD to enforce? Code enforcement or PD?
This, this would be a local enforcement through code enforcement administrative citation.
Do we have an idea? So it would be the standard administrative citation fine of?
I believe it starts at $25, $25 after the third citation, yeah, for $50. I'll have to confirm on that before I give you the wrong information.
And are there any distances that are changing as a result of this? No. Okay, so those, that part of the ordinance is staying the same. You're just updating the, the definition of smoking to broaden it, to include the new technology. How often will this need to be changed, given that technology is changing all the time?
Sure. So the definitions were developed. The attorneys, when they came up with it, they tried to think of all of the possible options. So hopefully, we are covered for maybe 10 to 15 years. We'll see. But they tried to make it as broad as possible. So, but yes, technology has always changed.
Who would have thought there would be vaping, you know, 10 years ago? Thank you. Any other questions from council at this time? Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
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 Mayor Robertson?
Yes. And with that, we'll close public meetings as a whole and get into our regular business agenda, starting with item three, consideration of a resolution authorizing the city to continue with teleconference public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As you are aware, pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, the city is required to adopt every 30 days a resolution that allows us to continue virtual public meetings. Normally, this item would be on consent. However, Mayor Robertson has requested for it to be placed as an item for discussion. So that is the reason that you see in it under new business. And if the city wishes to continue with teleconference meetings after the discussion, then our recommendation would be to approve the attached resolution. Thank you.
This has to be approved every 30 days, correct?
That's correct.
Anyway, okay. We'll bring this matter back to the council. Does anyone have any input on this at this time? I've got some input. The, it, it looks like the condition for having this meeting, having teleconferencing, I should say, depends on the following circumstances, one of which is meeting in person would present imminent risks to the health or safety of attendees. It doesn't look like that threat is present. That condition is not true any longer. The only time we've had in the past, since the beginning of the year, the only time the council is the only time the council has zoomed in has been one council member who zoomed in from their vacation home. So it hasn't been for a health related issue. Would we be in violation of this AB three six one if we continue to vote it in? Or what's the standing on that, given that there are no real imminent health risks at this time?
No, I think the city still has the choice to continue implementing this option. But obviously, it's not a requirement. So, but if we do want to enable virtual meetings, then we do have to adopt the resolution every thirty days. But it's not a requirement at this time.
I've seen, so I, this was brought up at Fresno Council of Governments, and Fresno Council of Governments had a discussion about it, and the Board of Supervisors and LAVCO, they meet in person. And a couple of the cities just meet in person. They don't, they don't do teleconferencing or Zoom, such as the city of Parleer. So there are cities kind of doing it one way and another. Council of Governments decided to delay the decision for three more meetings. So there would be three more meetings, and then the council would consider it again, because there were people who said it's good to have that flexibility of zooming in. There were those who said you really don't need to do it anymore. People should actually be here to look people in the eye when they make their decisions for the business of the people. So with that, is there any, is there a motion to continue three six one?
Okay, I didn't know that there was going to be a motion to continue. I don't know if you want to open it up to the public first or not.
Absolutely. With that, we'll open up the matter to the public. Does anybody have any input from the community on teleconferencing? Continuing it or stopping it? We have anyone who's teleconferencing who has an opinion on this? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back. Does council have any opinion? Is there a motion to continue? We have a comment.
I just have a question, only because I, people, I don't have a business in town, but a lot of people know where I live. And so just on this, it's anybody attending or all council meetings would not be available on Zoom, they would still be available? Or what exactly?
I can address that. So we would still be able to broadcast the meetings on YouTube. It's with regard to participation. So if, you know, somebody's making a presentation or wants to, or a council member wants to attend via Zoom, or somebody from the public is wanting to make public comment, they would have to be in person if the resolution is not adopted.
And the reason I needed that clarification is the people that are, and asked me, come and ask me, is that they are, and I'm just talking a handful. I'm not talking the whole city, but you know, just those handful have a voice. And so they like the fact that we're able to zoom because they're at a kid's soccer game or kids', you know, activity or what have you. So then this gives them that flexibility to be able to, if they need to, comment and, you know, participate virtually. And then, you know, this also, even though we may not be at that stage anymore, if somebody's not feeling well, this gives somebody the opportunity to be able as, you know, to protect the health of everyone else. So I just needed clarification on why we were going to go against what has set in Emily versus continuing to.
Right, and just a clarification on my side, because we went over this at Council of Governments. You can still, if you have the sniffles, can still stay home. And, but you have to publicly notice your residence wherever you are tele-zooming in. Doesn't mean you can't zoom anymore, correct, city council?
Okay, so you would go back to the original meeting rules under the Brown Act, which means only one council member could appear remotely. You'd have to post the agenda for the required amount of time, whether it's special or regular, at the location where you're going to have the meeting or where you're going to appear from. You'd have to open your home hotel room to whoever in the public wanted to attend at that location. So the Brown Act rules are more restrictive when we're regularly under the Brown Act. What AB three sixty-one does is it provides that flexibility, and that flexibility is there through January one, twenty twenty-four, but only as long as we have proclaimed emergencies. So once a proclaimed emergency goes away, you no longer have that ability under AB three sixty-one.
And this proclaimed emergency could go away pretty much at any time, is that correct?
Depending on what the government does, yeah.
What the Assembly and the Senate vote in?
Yeah, and I think the terms of AB three sixty-one recognize that.
So with that, we'll bring it back. Does everybody want to continue this for now and just keep doing it every thirty days? Or is there, is there a motion to do that, or is there a motion to stop AB, to stop the teleconferencing in the Zoom and to go back to the previous Brown Act considerations?
Assembly Bill three sixty-one?
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Menjoz Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho? Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Truhye?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. And we'll move on to item four. This is a council request to discuss the Selma Military Banner Program. Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you might recall, on November fifteenth of last year, there was a request brought to the council for approval to waive fees up to ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars for the Selma Military Banner Program, which is being coordinated through the Selma Business Collaborative and the Selma Chamber of Commerce. And the approval included installation along Witten Avenue, Second Street, and Second Street slash McCall to Floral Avenue and around Lincoln Park. And the program itself would be coordinated and and executed by the Chamber of Commerce and the Selma Business Collaborative. We agreed to provide labor in terms of putting up the banners and the necessary hardware for the banners between, I think it was Memorial Day and Veterans Day. They would go up on Memorial Day and be brought down on Veterans Day, if I'm not mistaken. And so the city staff would be doing that work, and the waiver was to approve, to not charge up to ten thousand dollars for that labor. And as the council, as the report states, this matter is being brought back up for discussion.
Okay, that will bring the matter back to council. I actually requested this item to be brought back to council, and before we open the matter to the public, I will say why. When this was approved four months ago, it was conditioned that Selma Business Collaborative would get its paperwork updated with the state, its annual report, and its tax returns. Also, that the veterans group here, the actual veterans themselves, post twelve, would have input in it and would be part of the process. So I'm here to bring this back tonight to see if both of those have happened, or if either of those has happened. Does anyone else have any comments at this time?
I do. There's a lot said right there in regards to what we approved before we do anything. I'm sure like our city clerk to go back and look at the meeting, look at, or the city manager, go back and look at what we actually approved, so we can make sure that we have that. You know, we approved this, we approved this because the community members came out and said they wanted to do something. I, I'm okay with bringing it back to the council. But I feel like we're having an item brought to council so we can question what our community wants to do. And I'm starting to feel that just because we gave an MOU to the veterans, they feel that they have the right to go and tell our community members what they can and can't do. And that's certainly not the agenda for anybody. And I want to make sure that this community has the right to do what they want. Every family member has a veteran. Everybody has people they care about. And if they feel that they want to put flags up, and our city council already approved it, why are we having it put it back on the agenda? So that's one of my biggest questions. Why is it back on the agenda? And since we're talking about the veterans' flags, I actually talked to a couple of people, and you know, people are actually overwhelmed about what they're doing, that there are, there are actual people in our Selma that need, that should be recognized, that haven't been recognized. So I want to take the bad and turn it to a good, you know, to the, to the organization. Many years ago, prior to the housing authority changing the name to a facility, apartment complex, it was actually named William R. Shockley, I think if I pronounced it right. And that individual was a veteran. I believe, and I want the organization to know that my business already donated for two non-disclosed people banners. I'll donate for another flag for his. I believe that every community member should get together, rally around this group. I don't want to, you know, we're going to start questioning about anybody's licenses. You know, if you want to question a license, think of this. The city's own agency has an invalid license. And I haven't brought it up because it's the city's, it's mine, it's mine also, you know? It's, I represent the city. But I understand that was passed, that was passed, that was passed when a city, a different manager was here. I'm sure this manager will fix it. We shouldn't be, I don't, I want to turn it around and make it good instead of bad. So to the organization that's doing this, you know, I tell you that I want to pay for a flag for that. Pay for it because I think we should do good, not, not talk about. And for the American Legion, if it's already gone for two, three months, rally around the city, talk to them. But if there's going to be separation, and there's going to be devices, or it's going to be divisive, conversate, converse with them. Converse with them. Talk to, talk to each other. Don't bring it back to the council. We already approved it. And we can all say what we want, but at the end of the day, it was approved. We got city staff here waiting to go home because they, you know, so this item shouldn't have been brought back. This item should have been just, they're grown adults, have conversation, come with, you know, people together, talking to each other. That's my, that's my opinion.
Any other council?
Yeah, I have some questions. And I would just like to question a few things in regards to these stipulations on here. And this has just been brought to my attention in regards to some of the veterans that are concerned about the price, they're concerned about the location. And I'm just here to get some clarity for them. But one of the questions, and this is what came up, and this is probably why there's a lot of controversy out there, is because when this first came about, Mike Kirchner, you mentioned this was going to cost about eighty, eighty-nine dollars a banner, okay? You were on record, you stated that. Now it comes here and it says it's two hundred and eighty dollars. So that's what their question is. How did it go from eighty-nine dollars for a banner to two hundred and eighty dollars a banner? I mean, all they want is just the breakdown, and I don't think that there's been anyone that can give them this breakdown. The other thing is as a city, and I'm sure the council could clarify this. As a businesswoman, if I want to sponsor, if I want to sponsor five veterans and pay for those flags, I'm looking at your nonprofit for the Selma Business Collaborative. And it states here that your delinquency notice and warning has not been complete. So how are you wanting citizens and individuals and business owners to participate? If this is something that we can't write off, I mean, I'm just saying as a businesswoman, you know? Why would I want to give to a charity or a nonprofit if it's not valid? And I just would like for our council to maybe give a brief on this. Can I give you this, Mary?
If I could just clarify, Councilmember Garrett, the city's role in this program is only to put up the banners and remove the banners. The actual production and all the costs associated with the production of the banners is solely the responsibility of Selma Business Collaborative. So we wouldn't be, the city wouldn't be verifying any tax contributions or tax, you know, benefits as a result of, you know, contributing to the effort, just for clarification.
Okay, but when this started off, you started off with Mike. And the understanding was they thought Mike and Liz were going to be handling this.
No, the item was brought forward and the item was brought forward by Tracy Tosta, in our former economic development analyst. And the estimates that were provided to her on the cost of, the city's cost of removing and installing the banners was provided by the Public Works Department, Mr. Shane Farrell. I don't recall Michael being involved in that process, but I may be wrong.
Prior to that, before the start, we were just asked to do some research. I researched Kerman, Reedley, and Sager, right at some estimates of what the banners cost themselves, but each city charges more because of public works and things. So probably, if I did mention eighty dollars, it was the banner itself, this quote, just an estimate provided, what we found just for the banner only. But that was just a preliminary report that the city manager has asked me to write to city council, and then, or with Tracy, and then all I did was just to report of what we found at the time.
Thank you, Michael.
So is there any way that we could get a breakdown as to why it's costing two hundred and eighty dollars for the banner?
I believe a representative from the Selma Chamber of Commerce and Selma Business Collaborative is here. I would defer to them for any information.
I would just say also, if I could, because the banners are going on city property, the city is part of the process and very visibly part of the process. So any problems that could arise from those banners could potentially be brought to the city's doorstep, bringing up the question, is there an MOU or a contract with the Selma Business Collaborative? And stating that there'd be a hold harmless, that they would hold the city harmless and indemnify it for any legal actions that come about from, say, trademark infringement, which can happen with posting signs. And would there be, is there any insurance backing up that hold harmless and indemnification clause?
I'm not aware of one. I'm not sure if that's something that we've required in the past for installation of banners of any sort, but we that was something that would have been discussed when the item was originally approved, and I don't recall whether that was or not, but we can do that research and find out what the situation was there. At the end of the day, it is on city property, and we'll be responsible for installing it properly and acquiring the proper hardware for that. But the contents of the banners or anything like that are not our responsibility.
Then I have another question in regards to the location of the banners, where it says along Witten, Second Street, McCall, and Floral. Now, my understanding is an individual, when he went to inquire about the banners, he was told that he had to, it had to be on Witten, and he doesn't want it on Witten. So my question is, do they have the option to say, I prefer to have mine on McCall or Second Street or Floral? Do they have that option?
That's something I would defer to Selma Business Collaborative. They're the ones managing that program.
Okay, and then also, on the proof of eligibility. Okay, you're asking for a valid DD two fourteen form, possession of United States Uniform Service Privilege and Identification Card, comma, US Military ID. What about an Honorable's Discharge Certificate? Wouldn't that prove that they're in the military?
The city itself is not verifying any of that information. That would be the Selma Business Collaborative.
I believe we have members in the audience tonight who are the actual veterans themselves who are being honored. Would any of you from post twelve like to have a contribution to this discussion at this time?
I'm going to hand out a sheet of paper that I want you, city council, city manager, city attorney, the mayor to look at. Just, it's a it's one of our local veterans here from Selma that is deceased. It's a Vinon vet. But thank you, Mayor. Thanks, city council, city manager, and city attorney for giving us a few minutes here. I know the meeting was held in November. We're not trying to come here to start a bickering, oh, we require this and we're doing this to, you know, I just want to make it for you that we're not making it a, a bitter discussion. Uh, we don't want to make it like a controversial. We're happy that the Mrs. Tucker and Mrs. Kane are taking charge. We're grateful for that. I mean, that's, that's, uh, that's, we're honored for that to, to, to take effect. Our question is that the, the issue of going down Winston, uh, we, our veterans, we voted on our posts, we have talked to veterans, local veterans in the community. We think that we, our veteran banners should be on McCall, High Street, Second Street, where they should be, the Veteran Plaza area, and on the Veteran Plaza. It's not like I want my banner to be right there at the, at the monument, right by the, by the, the monitor we put up. Where our post is recommending that, and we'll pay the fees. Like I said, there's a Silver Star recipient there. Uh, we've got Mr. Marquez, another, another Silver Star recipient that was from the body, a Korean veteran. We got, uh, Shockley, like you said, Trill, that's a medal, a Medal of Honor recipient. We want to put Shockley's banner right there in the center of the, uh, Veterans Plaza. We could put, uh, Reginald Herrera, actually, that's his brother that passed away in that Vietnam citation right there, which is a Silver Star. If you guys are not familiar with it, that's the second highest award you could get in the military. It's just not handed out like a, a candy. So we could put, we, our post is recommending put, uh, Reginald Herrera's brother's, uh, banner on the side of Shockley's and Mr. Marquez with the permission of the families. Mr. Marquez on the opposite side of the Veteran Plaza. All we're asking for is that us veterans get the proper recognition. We don't want it down Winston. I could tell you that right now. Winston, I mean, yeah, you could drive through there, but the traffic, the flow, the walking, people walk downtown. I think us veterans, and not just myself, mine could go on the far opposite side. I don't, that doesn't, uh, bother me. But like the veterans, like I'm showing you now, I think they require the proper recognition and it should be downtown where people walk through there, they go downtown. That's what we're requesting. That's, and I think that's a proper area for us, not down Winston where you got these big trees that are blocking, you could drive through there, but how many people walk through Old Ninety-Nine? To me, I took it as an insult, you know? I want it where the downtown area. And if it has to be taken down for a week due to the band festival or, or some other, I'm sure our post wants to say, hey, well, it's got to stay up there from Memorial to Veterans Day. We don't have an issue with it being taken down for a day or two. All we're asking is that if it, like, um, Lorenzo Real stated when he spoke at the, at the ceremony, if it wasn't for us veterans, we wouldn't have what we have now. So all we're asking is for a little reconsideration to be brought up again to you, city council members, to the city manager. But do I get one of my other members to speak, or do I just keep?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's all we're asking about is that, that you guys really look at it and take that in consideration, that us veterans get put in a proper location. And we're willing to support it. Like I said, we're honored that they're taking the initiative to start this program. And, uh, you know what? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Any, anyone else? Would anyone else like to say anything at this, at this time? Okay. Mr. Shaper?
I think the, uh, the banner should be downtown Salma, McCall Avenue, around, even around Lincoln Park, and not on Witsen Street. Because I, I walk that every day now, because I had an accident a while back. And that, that Witsen, you got trucks going down there, you got people throwing trash, you got dogs doing their stuff on the sidewalk. It's a mess down, down Witsen from Second all the way to Floral. And I don't think our, I don't think our banner should be down there. I think they should be downtown Salma where it's more, they get the, we get the respect. All the veterans get the respect.
Thank you for your input. Sir Avolos?
I'd just like to say, I, I think, um, both parties should pay on where they should be and have a, a open mind about it.
Okay.
You know, and I think that some of it should be designated certain spots, like the Silver Star.
Thank you. Thank you. And I believe the city manager said we had a representative of the Salma Business, oh, we have another member of the Public. And we'll ask for our member of the Salma Business Collaborative to respond.
Jim Avalos, uh, seventeen oh one Danube, first. Veterans, big time. Okay. I'll tell you why. You know, government, that flag we stand. Not on this country, seventeen seventy-six, we wouldn't be here today where we're at. And the Constitution we hold now is in play since that timeframe. And, uh, I respect you guys because my father was in the, he was a veteran in World War Two decorated, uh, in the, in the Japanese war, World War Two, he was in Water Canal, uh, the Marine Corps took the hill. I have the flag with his name on it, believe it or not. Uh, he gave the lives taken, taken that hill for the, uh, but he, but my father came back, he wasn't much of a talker. I'll be honest with you guys. Uh, I didn't know much of my father when, about the war until later on as he got older. Uh, but, uh, he said, son, war is not easy, I says, but when it's all said and done, I says, the idea, when you get done, you have to make friends, make peace with each other. And, and it's very difficult at times, but, but, and, but the flag we stood for, I laid my life down, you know? United States of this country. And he says, and I came back, I was wounded. Don't get me wrong, guy, son. I came back alive, but you know, you wouldn't be here today without me. So, uh, but that's why I'm here. Uh, my father's gone, but I speak up for the veterans, you know? They're, they're the true people in our country that stand up in freedom. Look at what's going on and right now across the world, uh, situation with Russian invasion. You know, it's, they're fighting for freedom. We're doing what we can to help this country for freedom. It's who we are. Democracy, it's who we are. And you guys took an oath that they're, uphold the constitution of this country. And, and as far as the veterans, you know, the flag, Char, I admire you for the flag. I admire that strongly. Uh, but also I, I, I respect the veterans where they want to have their, their flags and flying their flags for their loved ones and their family. I respect that greatly because those people, those people that serve in the veterans and in this country, protect that flag. And I think we owe them that much. And this, very little, not, it don't cost that much really, stop and think about it. It's what, it's what they do for this country. And I appreciate, uh, Char for what she does on the, on, on the flag. Good idea. But let's work together and find a neutral ground.
Thank you.
Of the lane. Yo, um, I'm kind of at a loss here. You approved our flags to be out on Witsen. And that is what we have advertised. We have sold flags. And everyone thinks that that is an awesome place to hang those flags. You know, everybody wants to have something to say about this. No one took the initiative to do this prior to our committee. And I'm not sure why we're going back and rehashing this. You know, we just sold three, um, yesterday to, um, I'm sorry, Friday, to a mother who bought three of them for her sons. And she thought that Witsen was a great place to display those because there would be so much traffic, so many people would see them. My question is, if why are we thinking one veteran is better than another? Should they not all be hung at the same place? I, I, I don't understand all the controversy. This is something that should have been such a wonderful program for our community. And now it has turned into, back into questions. You've questioned our taxes. Our taxes have been filed. So I, I really don't know what else to say to you, but you all approved this and you need to leave it alone and let us go forward. Thank you.
But we have some questions. And I don't think that people are being controversy. They're just wanting to know because these questions are not being answered. Their question is, and you didn't answer, can they request to put them on other streets that it states on here, McCall, Floral, Second Street, and the Veterans Plaza? Do they have the choice to do that?
On Witsen, from Second Street down to Floral.
No, no, it says perimeter of Lincoln Park as well.
Okay. How are you going to pick and choose who goes in Lincoln Park?
The people will choose. And that's the whole point of tonight, Mr. Tucker. You have the veterans here, the people that this program is meant to offer, and they're not supporting your program. That gets my attention. No, I, I wouldn't be having this discussion again if there weren't problems with the program, one of which is you, the nonprofit status of this organization that is administering the money, taking the money. If it's not, you have a letter dated March fourth from the Secretary of State of California that says, pardon me, I'll let you speak, but let me speak. Um, it's dated March fourth. And if you don't get your annual report in and your tax return in, your nine ninety, you will be disaccredited. That means you can't conduct business. You can't take the money. So you have until May fourth to do that. Also, the veterans, when you first, when this first came in front of the council four months ago, there was going to be an effort to work with the veterans. Fortunately, we're talking about it tonight, and there's still can be an opportunity because I think everyone wants this to happen. It's not a matter of changing this, it's a matter of improving it, making modifications so that it's a better program that actually honors the veterans. People can shake their head all they want, but the actual veterans are over there. And I took the oath of the fighting man as well. And I take this program very personally. And I think there are issues about the contact, about whether there's bilingual contact for the program. You know, all sorts of issues are coming up. That means, no, the program shouldn't be scrapped, absolutely not. It's great in concept, but the execution is what could be modified. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight.
Mr. Mayor, um, you've, so you've spoken a lot on this issue.
This is my right, council member, and you can speak just as much as, as you want as well. You go for it. No one's holding you back.
Once again, this item was approved. Mr. Mayor, if you want to put it back on the council for next council meeting, to move it to wherever you want to move it to, and you can get a hold and see if you want to change it to a direction, follow, follow the direction, put it on, put on the agenda. Let's not, let's not argue with our residents. It's just come to, this has come, put on the agenda. If it gets approved, it gets approved. That's the, that's the only way to do it. Put on the agenda. But other than that, it's already been approved. Are you going to make a motion to, to kill the last approval? If you are, then make it, add it on the council agenda. Aside of that, why are we going to waste time with residents? We have the veterans and we have community members that are at odds. But we as council approve this issue. So aside of us getting involved and adding to the issue that they have, we've made a decision, and I just want to stick on the dais, we approve this. Now, if there's people that are against it and you want to change what the council approved, put it on the agenda. And if it gets approved, it gets approved. Other than that, let's not go and start attacking individuals about their EIN number or their nonprofit, or it's just, let's, let's follow protocol with council and let's move on.
Yeah, the protocol is, we all have the rights of free speech and we're exercising those tonight, that the people in our armed forces backed up with their lives. This is not deciding whether we should paint, um, a gut or yellow or black or orange. This is, this is deciding how we honor the most revered, some of the most revered members of our society who laid down their lives for our freedom. So this is important and it should be looked at again. And we should look at it again, and we should look at it again after that, if the veterans themselves are not happy with how the program is run. And since there was no communication before, or it was unsatisfactory because there was some, there was rudeness shown on one side, well, then it had to come back to council so that the council could address this situation. That's how serious this is, Councilmember Triel. I get it that maybe you don't feel that this is a very serious topic. I feel that our veterans are extremely serious and they deserve our attention and to make sure that a program administering the, um, the honoring of those who have given their lives, past and present, I think it's a very worthy, um, pastime for our council and a very worthy activity. And I think it needs to be looked at. And I would hope that going forward, our veterans and the folks who've taken it on themselves to, um, put these flags up, will get together and we'll have a discussion about how this can be made better. I would like not to bring this back to council, um, next, whoop, next two weeks, but I'd like to bring it back in May, certainly, after the deadline that the Secretary of State of California has given to this nonprofit to get their financial house in order. I would like to bring that back to verify that that has been taken care of by the Salma Business Collaborative so that people can feel, um, assured that the tax write-off that they take for buying these banners is actually justified and won't get them into trouble at audit. I don't think that's too much to ask. Do you, council member? Does any council member?
No.
Okay. So this is not, do we have someone else who would like to weigh in, sir?
Here, my, uh, that citation you have up there with my older brother. Even as of today, back in nineteen sixty-six, he was killed in Vietnam. He'll get upset. Father was a World, World War II vet. I put twenty-one years in Air Force. Other brothers I just now lost here, January of last year. He put six years in the Marine Corps. Brother, I lost two years ago. Open. All of us gave up something. For all of us. Don, because Don is just bullheaded. Excuse me for saying that, Don, you have your own personal opinion. Don't have our own opinions as what has to be done. I'm not saying honor us as veterans, but a lot of us gave up a lot. Sometimes I even regret it. And the things we didn't want to do that we regret now. We're just asking for the amount of money we're trying to beautify our park here for and understand what all those statues represent. That's why we want our flags out there, not on Witsen. Witsen, it's fine. I mean, don't get me wrong, but that's a rough road. I tell you, it really is. It's awful. And, uh, somebody else mentioned it to me down in Keenburg, we were talking about this, it came up. Why would you want to put it down? Hey, when you have a perfectly perfect park, Second Street is in good shape. A lot of your customer, a lot of your traffic comes down Floral Avenue, down McCall. Um, they're the two busiest streets we have here in town. But, you know, I, I may be talking on my backside and ladies, I'm sorry if I do get out of a headline, I'm sorry. Um, but just for all of us, not just my family. My entire family was military. And the day I die, I hope I'm honored the same way. I just now lost my home in October of last year. Fire. Every bit of my uniforms, my medals. Some way, somehow, when I, my time comes up, I want to get buried. I want to be better in my uniform. I think I deserve that much. All of our boys that served, young ladies that have served.
Thanks very much for your input. Appreciate it. Know you meant every word of that and you backed it up. Anyone else like to speak at this moment?
Ten fifty-seven Mel Street, Rose Robertson. You know, this is a very, very sad day for the American Post. Um, why are we even doing this? They should be the ones to determine, you know, have a big impact of where these flags should go. They know who's senior in their organization. I mean, Char Tucker just stated that there's a mother that's okay with them being on Winston. Well, you know, maybe that mother should speak with the American Post. They can all work something out, but But American Post veterans should be number one in this, and they should be approving where these flags go. And they are going to be as fair as anything, and they will not be political, as we know, as some people love to be political. And we just don't need that when it comes to our veterans. We need the red carpet rolled up for them, and we need to honor them, and we need to stop allowing these nonprofit organizations here in our town of Selma to not follow protocol and file the paperwork with the Secretary of State. What boggles my mind is we have a council member up there who does taxes for a business, and he never gives information correctly. It's okay. You know, here we are talking. Let's not worry about our VIN number and, you know, putting our papers together for the Secretary of State. Let's get real here. This is money going to nonprofit organizations for businesses who want to have a write-off to help our businesses. So let's get our stuff together here in Selma on nonprofit organizations and get ourselves filed correctly with Secretary of State. And we also need to know who are all these board members on these nonprofit organizations, nonprofit. Yes, the city better start getting serious about where our taxpayer money is going as well. Thank you.
Louis Franco, 1064 Mill Street. It's actually kind of disheartening to hear this conversation, to be honest. I know a lot of other surrounding communities like Reedley, Parlier, Sanger have this veteran flags program. And it's just, I'm just sitting here kind of astonished, but really sad that our community wants to honor our veterans and our veterans aren't happy about it. And I understand maybe there was a lack of communication, and like the one veteran gentleman said, they just really need to sit down and talk together. We're one community. We're Americans. Like, like somebody said here, we all have family members that are veterans or veterans ourself. You know, I love this country, and I love all those, and I'm grateful for all those who have served and are serving right now. But it's just like, only Selma can turn such a positive into a negative. So let's just pause and put our emotions in check and regroup and do what's right for our community. And then also, in regards to, I agree, we do need to get our nonprofits in order. The Selma Community Enhancement Corporation, which is a nonpartisan profit that the city runs, that you guys are members of, is currently suspended. It's under suspension under Secretary of State. And before we go and pointing fingers at other nonprofits, yes, everybody needs to do their paperwork properly. We shouldn't, before we do that, maybe we should take care of our own. So I ask that, as a community, we just be a little bit more civil. Thank you.
Thanks for your input.
Bob Allen, 1315 Maple, Selma, California. I just want to clarify the nonprofit issue that we're talking about here. There are two things. The nonprofit status comes from the federal government, not from the state. That's where your 501(c)(3) comes from. The, the state of California requests that you become registered with the state of California. If you are not registered, you're still a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I know that thanks to the mayor last time, you presented me with the paper showing that we were not in compliance. Within that week, we met with a representative that filed all those fees. We paid our money. So I haven't looked into the, to the records myself since then, but they were all presented to the state of California for approval. But the 501(c)(3) is a designation made by the federal government.
Right. And so the registry, just to clarify, says it is. Right, and they have been vouched safe with the running of nonprofits in California. So regardless of the IRS tax advantage status, the 501(c)(3), if you are delinquent, and let's just use Selma Business Collaborative as an example. The letter dated March 4th states, if you don't have your 990 and your RRF-1 into us by May 4th, you will cease operations. We will take away your status. To me, Mr. Allen.
About the card that's sent?
Yeah. To me, Mr. Allen, that means you are not allowed to take donations. You're not allowed to conduct business. You're not allowed to take money for the flags. So regardless of the 501(c)(3) status, you must cease operations according to the Secretary of State if this rather simple paperwork is not taken care of. And that's as of March 4th, Bob. Is this not?
I just know that I met and we filed the report. I will check into it, but my also.
Check the registry.
Is the 501(c) still is the designation that we received?
Yeah, check the registry of charitable trust. That's where it happens. That's where it's accredited. Thank you. Anybody else at this time? Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone? Okay, this is a discussion item. We'll bring it back to council. My preference is that we look at this again in May to see if the compliance has been reached on the nonprofit status of the S or the registry status of the Selma Business Collaborative and the state of the relationship with the veterans who are being honored with this program. Do we have consensus to check back on this in May?
I have, go ahead. I just have some comments. So I'm really sad because what I hear is, I need a tax write-off. I don't care about the veterans. I just want a tax write-off, is what I'm hearing.
Nobody said that.
That's what I'm hearing. That's exactly because they're not. And the reason is because something's not filed. You're not a 501(c), you're not this, you're not that. Businesses can't take the deduction. That's a separate issue than what we have that the council had actually approved. The council had approved for a waiver of up to $10,000 to, for the installation of this, of this, of these banners. And I looked back at the Exhibit C, and it says that the banners are to be installed on Whitson Avenue from Nebraska to Floral. It doesn't say anything about Lincoln Park. It doesn't, or about the Lincoln Park or anything like that.
Page 61. Get your page 61.
Well, the, the.
As a location. It's in there.
What I'm looking at is what the, the staff report is what was provided to us. So if it's incorrect, then we need to correct that. So, so if it's something that, because Exhibit B is the guidelines for the Selma Military Banner. So if they're programmed, so if that's incorrect, then that needs to be corrected by what the council approved. The council approved from Whitson, from Whitson Avenue to, I'm sorry, on Whitson Avenue from Nebraska to Floral. And they approved, and we approved the waiver of $10,000 for the installation cost. I am all for honoring the veterans. I, you know, I agree that, that any nonprofit that does business with the city of Selma has to be in compliance. However, I just want to, and I don't know, because they left, so they didn't get to, I didn't get to ask the question. But as far as the Lincoln Park, the Veterans Plaza, and I only see three branches of government that are represented in that park. I don't know if there's any plans to recognize the other branches that are there. So that's one big thing. If we're representing veterans, then we should represent our branches, not just three branches. And I don't know if that's because of the post that they, or if they represent everybody. That's one. The other thing is that if there's, there's a compliance issue regarding their status, then let's not waive the installation. They may have them pay for the installation of the banners. And, you know, again, do an MOU, do an agreement, something. But as far as I know, my staff report that we approved said Whitson from Nebraska to Floral. So if it's something, I feel like, I feel like the post needs to talk to the, the committee that put this together. My understanding is that this, this program has been in for a long time. And so if other cities are doing it, then I would have actually liked for the post to have come up with this program so that that way they can dictate where, what, where it's at. They can, you know, collaborate a little bit more. So I applaud the community for taking the initiative, this, this committee taking the initiative to do this for our veterans, because yes, we absolutely need something. I like to go to the different towns and see those different banners, and they're really like wherever there's more traffic. So I think that for us, what, what our focus should be is whether or not that $10,000 will still be waived or not. I think that's our role in it as far as whether or not that, that money should be waived for the installation. And also, of course, like where they're, where they're installed. But again, we approved it to be installed. Whitson from Nebraska to Floral. So if we need to change the paperwork, then you need to change the paperwork on the guideline. And I think that this is where that, I get it that we're a community and we're Selma, but you know, we're not letting our community work and do the volunteer work that they want because we're constantly trying to be in the weeds of things, and we shouldn't be in the weeds as, that standard. We, we set policies and we have staff that can go ahead and do that. I don't feel that this should have been brought back here to talk about whether or not the post and the committee are talking or not. So that was mine, my fence there. And so for me, I want to move forward with what we've already approved.
If I may clarify, just for discussion purposes, the original approval was the adoption of, of the resolution that's attached in the staff report. And it makes reference to the Selma Military Banner Program Guidelines. The guidelines are attached as Exhibit B, and on this, on page 61 is, location installation is what specifies the location, which does include Whitson Avenue, Second Street, McCall, to Floral, and the perimeter of Lincoln Park. Those guidelines were provided by the applicant.
It's what the veterans want. They weren't consulted. And when we first said this, when we first brought this up, we were going to, the condition was we were going to come back, and we were going to ask how it's going, and if they got together with the veterans, had some talk, and got their nonprofit status taken care of. Well, here we are four months later, and both, those are both still questions. So my only issue here is, why don't we bring this back? And we could talk about it again to make sure that these are not issues anymore. This is an important enough topic where it's, you know, the council member may think it's micromanaging. I say it's being a good citizen because I'm just here to represent you. I'm no fancy title. I'm no executive. I am just representing you. And I'm, and I'm another citizen and a veteran, and I'm representing the veterans here too. That's, that's not being in the weeds to me. That's doing my job, that I was elected to do as a volunteer position with the city. And I'm proud, I'm proud that I'm helping the veterans on this who came to me and said they had an issue. I'm also appreciative of the group that took the initiative to put the banners out. No one is saying to get rid of the program. It's just, you know, communicate and work on the program and make it better. That isn't going back and changing what the city passed. But as the city manager so intelligently pointed out, the locations on what the city council approved includes the perimeter of Lincoln Park. So we can be, the banners can be put around Lincoln Park, and that's not privileging anybody. That is just listening to the veterans themselves, and that's, that is what I'm asking for, for consensus for May, for a council meeting in May or early June.
Yeah, I think that, I just have a quick question. This is a beautiful program. That, this is, I remember starting this when Sarah Bonilla first brought this on. She brought it to Mike Kirchner. I mean, we want to work together. These are just questions that the veterans are asking. People in the community are asking. We know it's a great program. What they're asking is, will they have the option to put it in another area besides Whitson? If they want to put it on the Veteran Plaza, or they want to put it on Second Street, why can't we honor that? Why can't we say, yes, we can do that? Who gives the business the right to tell them they cannot have it there?
So all of these people that are buying these banners that are veterans and family members, you act like they don't matter, that only.
Not at all.
Well, just a second.
Not at all.
Because you keep referring to the group that was here tonight. When Mr. Zaniga came in to speak to me, this was after everything had been said, done, and finalized. I was hoping that we would get some participation from them. So he said he would go back to his group and see what they wanted to do, and he never called me back. So after our donation timeline was on the last day, I called him and he said, his words were, no, my group has decided that we're going to give our money to the mayor's project improving the playground equipment at city parks. So it was basically his decision not to participate.
Not the mayor's project, ma'am.
Well, that's what he told me, sir. So you can say it's not your project. I don't know.
I'm behind improving our parks, absolutely.
But I'm just telling you.
But it's not just mine. It's the whole city.
What Mr. Zaniga said to me, and that was the last time we spoke. So, you know, veterans that are buying these flags, they're content and they're happy. So how do you decide who goes out on Whitson and who goes in the plaza?
It should be their choice.
No, it can't be their choice. What if they all want to go in the plaza? Then what do you do?
It's first come, first served, Char.
What?
It's first come, first served. Whoever, if they come and they say, we're going to put seven flags, they pay for it. They first come, first served. What's wrong with that?
Yeah, you have turned this into such a complicated mess. You truly have.
You turned it into a complicated mess.
Well, how did I do that?
Because the people that come to you are saying that you're so rude to them. They can't ask you a question because you become so defensive.
Now you've made that up.
No, I did not make that up.
You know what? I'm so done discussing this with you, ma'am, because everything you have to say, you started out belittling our band festival because everybody had told you.
Okay, we're getting off the agenda. We're getting nowhere, ma'am.
Well, I'm just saying. So now I'm rude about everybody that comes to talk to me.
We're going too far. Thank, thank you for your comments. Thank you for your input. We'll bring this back to council. Do we have a consensus to bring the item back in May and to discuss the two items that we've been discussing tonight? No, you, you don't want to discuss it again, council member Navarro. Councilmember Trejo.
No, I do not.
Would you like to discuss it? Bring, okay?
No, I do not, but I want to go back to our.
I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm just getting roll call right now. Mayor Protem Cho, shall we go back and look at this again and see if they not check the nonprofit status and see how it's going with the veterans?
I think the way, this is the way it is. I think the veterans, you know, veterans, veteran legion, they should be talking to, to, I don't think it's our, it should not be our call.
It's on the city's land, ma'am. It's on the city property. It's on the most visible city streets.
Yeah, but they need to work it out. I think, that's what I say too. I think.
Okay, so you don't want to address this topic of the veterans' banners anymore? Is that correct?
No.
Councilmember Gera, did you want to come back and, and do you have a consensus? I have a consensus to it, absolutely. I honor the veterans. So, okay, we have a consensus to not discuss this again, and that's the way the council will go at this point. It's a discussion item. Thank you, everyone, for their input on this very, very important item. And with that, we'll move on to our second quarter budget update with our finance director. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff and Residents. This evening, finance staff will give an update on the city's second quarter financials ending December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Next slide, please, Reno. The second quarter budget review will consist of a review of the general fund, looking at budgeted revenues versus actual numbers. We'll discuss some, some of the factors affecting revenues and expenditures. We will also look at Measure S. Budget versus actual key factors for revenues and expenditures. We'll also take a look at our enterprise funds. Budget versus actuals that have we've received till the end of last year. General Fund, as you know, is for the primary fund for the city. And the total budget for the fiscal year approved budget for the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two is sixteen point six. Our second quarter estimate, we've got about eight point three million in some revenues and expenditures at this point in time. We had to accrue or had to anticipate some assumptions due to their timing and when the city would be receiving those. Next slide, please. You can see the general fund. We've got budgeted revenues of eight point three million. And at the end of last year, we actually have a record, excuse me, an actual revenue receipt of nine point two million, giving us a healthy variance of nine hundred and nineteen thousand. Some of the key factors, as I mentioned earlier, were that we accrued and received money, so revenue, sales tax, franchise fees and many motor vehicle and Lufy. Given the current condition that's going on in society with high inflation, we are seeing an increase in sales taxes. People are paying more for certain products. And hate to say this, but we as municipalities will be benefiting from that. In terms of our expenditures, again, our budgeted expenditures, since it is a budget bed budget, excuse me, a budget adopted. If it is a, an adopted budget that's balanced, we've got eight point three million in expenditures and our actual. At this point is seven point nine, giving us a variance of three hundred and sixty nine positive. So we're actually spending less than we thought we would be budgeted for. And many department heads are just mindful of the cost and related to their department operations. Also, given this continued uncertainty of the pandemic, many department heads are still taking that into consideration moving forward. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. As you can see, the the positive variance in their expenditure versus with, considered with the positive expenditure. Positive variance in our revenue, we have a net position gain of one point two million. That gives us a lot of breathing room for the rest of the year. Measure S, as you know, helps our public safety here at the city of Selma. And our budgeted revenues are one point one. We've got an actual receipt as the end of last year of one point two, giving us a positive variance of a hundred and seventy three thousand. If you can look at our expenditure side, we budgeted one point one million. And again, we've got actual, actual expenditures of nine, nine hundred and twenty three thousand. Giving us a healthy variance there as well of minimizing our expenditures.
Well, Measure S is tied to sales tax. So if sales tax goes up, Measure S goes up, correct?
And as you can see, our net position is a gain of three hundred and fifty one thousand. In terms of our enterprise funds, in terms of our enterprise funds, calculating these revenues is a little bit more difficult because of. They're tied to revenue, different streams and different assumptions, different accruals. But as you can see from the ambulance fund, at the end of last year, we've got a budget of two point one million with the actual revenues of one point two million. Leaving us with a negative variance of eight hundred and seventy seven thousand. But please pay attention to that footnote. At that point, we had only received fifty percent. As of the end of third quarter, which we are currently now, we have received more of those estimates coming in. So this fund is actually pretty healthy at the moment. I'm just giving you a snapshot at the end of last year.
How much is it at the moment, right now?
Good question, Mayor. You caught me. I would have to run a report for that, but I am concerned. I I am aware that we did receive those revenues in in the third quarter of this.
The city's been transferring about a million from the ambulance fund over and is looking to this fund. To finance a good part of the new fire station. Is that plan still a good one? With the, given these numbers?
That's a discussion for regarding the audit and and the budget process. So we can, we can look into that and answer it at that time.
Okay.
So as you can see, our expenditures here are also very tight, saving us a net loss of eight hundred and twelve thousand. Pioneer Village, as you can see, our revenues in our budget and our adopted balance budget was fourteen thousand. We actually have received twenty five thousand. Giving us a healthy variance of about eleven thousand. In terms of our budget expenditures, our budget is a little bit higher there. Our actual expenses is a little bit higher. There is about twenty five hundred dollars. But again, we keep a net gain, a healthy net gain of nine thousand dollars in Pioneer Village. Terms of transit, there is an error in your slides and I apologize for that. But this is, this is the revised slide where I show a budget of four hundred and seventy one thousand. With actual revenues received of four hundred and ninety five thousand, giving us a healthy variance of twenty three thousand. If you look at our expenditures, our budget was four hundred and sixty six, our actuals four thirty. And I think in the original, I show a loss when it's actually a positive. I apologize for that, but you see a healthy variance of thirty five thousand. And our transit enterprise fund is at a positive at net gain of fifty nine thousand.
When your expenditures go down more than your revenues go up, it looks like you get a negative number on your spreadsheet formula. I saw that. Thank you.
So it is a gain.
Analysis paralysis, Mayor.
That's what I came up with.
In terms of our, our cultural arts enterprise fund, again, you can see it's healthy on the budgeted side of sixty eight thousand. We're showing actual revenues at the end of last year or toward mid-year at ninety two thousand with a healthy variance of twenty four thousand. Our expenditures, our budget is ninety four thousand, our actuals eighty nine thousand, giving us a healthy variance of five thousand one hundred and ninety five. And our net gain is a twenty nine thousand. Those were just a brief update in terms, again, the general fund is the primary fund for the city. Measure S and some of the enterprise funds that we currently have. And now I'm open for questions for, this is only for mid-year, so.
Mr. Yvonne, as I just wanted a question on the culture arts or the actual, does this include the grant that they received?
Ended up to.
Okay.
Or Steph, no, it does not. The California Arts Council has made contact with towns and public affairs and actually, yes. They've had a transition in their programming and how they do their computers and sends out, and then they had some staff changes because of COVID. So they did say February is their target, but no, that's twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars is still coming.
Okay, so you still have that coming.
Right.
Perfect.
I've got a question about internet sales tax. How's that looking for the city? I know there was that South Dakota case with Wayfair. How is that affecting our internet sales tax and our prevalence or not over cities with distribution centers?
I would have to look into what the H D O report has been saying that in terms of the current pool of where we land on that. There has been some effect in terms of internet sales that have come through the state of California, but in terms of how it's targeted into the city of Selma, I would have to review that.
I I can answer that very broadly. It has very marginally impacted our, our sales tax receipts. Because it's more now distributed more evenly throughout, throughout the county, but not to. We're actually still at a very high level of receipts.
Because we have such high sales tax here and it's based on our proportion of sales tax to other cities in Fresno County.
Sure, yes. And it also, so we're the, we're about. So it's Fresno, Clovis and Selma in terms of the the order and sales tax receipts and we're still in that order.
We're the third highest city in terms of receipts proportionally of internet sales tax at this time.
Well, I'm not sure about specifically internet sales tax, but overall sales tax, it did decline because of that Wayfair ruling. But I can get you, I can give you the the latest H D L report that breaks down those numbers.
I thought we as a council supported the League of Cities proposition that. Cities just with distribution centers should not get the lion's share.
That would be distributed more evenly across.
Should be more just more evenly. Read Amazon. Whoever has the Amazon distribution centers seems to make out pretty well.
Yep. I have another question on the savings, which this is a great report. Does this include some of the COVID relief fund?
No, this is completely separate from those funds.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Finance Director, but the those special, those revenues that we received through ARPA, I think that's what you're referring to. Are not being counted in this report.
That is correct. This is all just strictly general fund.
I just think your reports quarterly like this is a great idea because it does give the council. Direction, you know, to look at this in departments of where more for staffing wise, where. One department needs more people versus another. And I think it's great to do this quarterly. Because this is something that I had brought up to S K F. Instead of meeting just once a year to go over the projects, I said. There's, there could be so many other things going on throughout the year. So meeting with the city and the staff at least. What was, what did we agree to Fernando, at least every two, twice a year? You know, with S K F to see where we're at is going to be better than once a year. And you bring in this to us now. Quarterly is a great idea because we used to get it once a year. So thank you for that.
Our starting budget season, I think department heads have now an idea of a.
It's kind of like that Google map with the businesses that are coming in. It's been very, very helpful. You you pioneered that. In a previous position, city manager with the, using the G I S system and it was so much more user friendly. And I look forward to to seeing that again in the future, seeing all those businesses that are coming in and where they're coming in. He made it very user friendly for us, just like this report. Thank you. Thank you, both of you. Do we have any comments or questions from? Community tonight? Do we have anybody on the phone or Zoom? Okay, that will bring it back. Thank you, Finance Director. And that is a discussion item. If we have no more comments from council, we will now move on to our departmental reports. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, just a couple of quick updates here that I wrote down. I did want to let the council know that. Last Friday was Employee Appreciation Day. And on Thursday, we held a employee appreciation luncheon for all city of Selma staff that was able to attend. And I'm very thankful that we got a great turnout in our police department, our cities, our city hall staff, our fire department. Public Works Transit employees, Recreation employees, all were able to come out and enjoy some tri-tip. And and just enjoy our company and let, and it gave me an opportunity to. Let them know how much we appreciate both as a city manager and as a council. I sent, I passed along my regards. So thank you again to the city staff. We highly appreciate you and all the work that you do. So thank you again. And another quick update. I received information from our Assemblyman Arambula's office. That they are going to be proposing a new bill, Assembly Bill twenty seven eighty. In this next legislative session, that will address our issues with the E I F D. Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District that will allow us to form and participate. In an E I F D if the bill is passed. So fingers crossed, we'll have a flyer sent out to the council once that's finalized. But I wanted to give you an update on the work that Chris Comm is doing with our elected representatives in Sacramento. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Attorney Lerner?
So the only update is you have new Brown Act handbook, so a little light reading for if you have trouble falling asleep.
Thank you for that. Okay, our deputy city manager, Rob Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick update. Wanted to let the council know that this next Sunday on the thirteenth, there will be. A portion of High Street that will be closed for a special event. It will be basically from just on the east side of McCall. Over to just before the public parking lot right there. So a very small portion of the street. But it's actually going to be a collaboration between a new business that's doing a ribbon cutting and what's called a pop-up event, which is really like a mobile. Farmer's market. I'm, you're starting to see those a lot more popular in the area. And so we had worked with a, with an applicant and a couple of people that were coming in and requesting that item. Sunday is typically a slow day in the downtown area, so we felt that that was very appropriate at that time. Their event will be from ten AM to four PM. The street itself will be closed from eight to six. That will allow a couple hours before for their setup and then a couple hours after for tear down and cleanup.
And you'll be sending out flyers to any of the merchants who are affected?
Yes, and in fact, the applicants are also going door to door on that street as well to make sure that they're not only introducing themselves to the business and property owners, but making sure that they know about the event as well. So we're doing everything we can on the public side to make sure that good notices out there. And they're also doing that on the private side to begin that relationship building.
Are we promoting that on the website, the city website, a flyer that they might have?
I don't think we received a flyer from the applicant, but since it is a private event, the street closure. That's not something we typically require, but we can notice the actual closure, the boundaries of the closure.
But will the pop-up event be doing? What's it to do?
The pop-up event actually brings in several vendors.
And it's, what is it? I mean, commemorating, is it, what's the theme?
It's really just a commercial activity, right? So the the biggest thing that they go for is to try to help businesses that are just getting started, small vendors. Like I said, really more of a farmer's market in its mentality and local small vendors that may not have an actual storefront. But that are coming in and and will have either small businesses, businesses that that operate from out of town, some of them from occupation permits. Those type of items, but may not have a storefront.
Something to celebrate and encourage small merchants then.
That's exactly what it is.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Director Ibanez?
Good counsel, know that next meeting, we will start our mid-year process and start beginning our budget sessions with department heads in the rest of the city for.
Thanks for that. Public Works Director Shane Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Real quick update from Public Works. First of all, I wanted to reflect back on the graffiti that was brought to my attention last week. At the east, eastern side of the block wall at city limits there at United Health Center. That has been addressed. Myself and the code enforcement officer were out there the following day after the council meeting took pictures. He submitted letters to. United Health, or excuse me, Advanced Health, I believe it is, the old hospital. And also, we went by the physical therapy place on Country Club Lane. And they got a letter submitted as well. I was there today, both, both locations. It appears to me that they've tried to take it off the block wall, the physical therapy place. I don't think they've been very successful. Maybe I'm wrong. I I could be wrong. I don't. I don't know what it looked like at the very beginning, but they still have a little time. According to the letter, I talked to code enforcement today and we will be following up with them on that.
Is that their block fence or is it Courtney Moore's or is it Dr. Kim's or do we know, is it Bethel's?
I am not a hundred percent. I think it's shared block wall because it creates a barrier between Bethel Home as well as those other businesses. Courtney J. Moore Physical Therapy Place, et cetera. So.
But you're working with Pro P T on it?
Definitely.
Okay.
Also, I want to revisit. A question about the check register last week, which was the catalytic converters that were charged on there. I spoke to George Sipon from the transit. And those were a theft that took place out at the Selma Fuel Dock's bus park facility. F R C T A has taken upon themselves to to go ahead and pay for this themselves. They also have taken upon themselves to. Install lighting and and added security with an infrared type security, laser beam trip type security to a high tech. I'm not really exactly sure on it, but they are installing lights at at their cost. They're, they're at over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars right now. Which will benefit to some Unified School District for future. Also, I wanted to talk to you guys about the Alton Street Cow Water mainline repair that took place, I believe, four or five weeks ago. There had been some complaints come in. The repair was made the day of the incident. I was there as well as Stuart Scoville with Cow Water. Following day, we were out and we cleaned up the the curb and gutter pan in-house. Damaged curb and gutter has been replaced and repaired and put back. And the patch, the temporary patches in the street will be paved permanently this week. I've confirmed that with Stuart. Just want to give you guys an update on that. Also, I'd like to just give you guys a brief overview of the speed bumps that we spoke about. I I reached out to the city of Parler and used them as a guinea pig, if you will. They were put, sent out to bid in February twenty twenty one for speed bumps, rubber plastic speed bumps. Forty foot wide street biz range from twenty five hundred dollars to sixty five hundred dollars. So that's pretty good range there. The majority of the bids, however, ranged from five to six thousand dollars. That's kind of comparable to what we spoke about. I also reached out to staff as instructed to get for code three staff, just to get their opinions on, on the whole speed bump deal. And overall. Both staffs from both departments. both staffs from both departments uh, were, were leaning more towards exploring other possible remedies to, to the speeding issues rather than jumping straight into the speed bumps. They, they're, my feeling from staff was that they will, it'll affect their response times, depending on where they're located. The main thoroughfares definitely will. Example would be the, the A Street Station Floral. That's their, that's their exit route. That's where they go. The drop-off and pickup at Roosevelt School has been put in the backside of the school now rather than being on floral. So, uh, maybe there's, there's room to work there. Uh, Washington School would be another good example. Abraham Lincoln, uh, Orange is the main thoroughfare for code-three vehicles.
Do, do first responders tend to go code-three around schools where kids are crossing, or is that, does that happen once in a while?
It, it does. If, if a call comes in and warrants that being the fastest route of travel, they certainly take, you know, great precaution when doing so, but, but it, if it necessitates, then we do.
And code-three equals how much miles per hour?
It's lights and sirens.
Oh, okay. Doesn't indicate a particular speed, though.
No, no. I mean, just within a, it's, with, with a situation like that, we're, we're gonna reduce our speed based on the conditions and the circumstances.
And you're saying the speed bumps would mandate slowing down even more?
It would, um, regardless of kids being let out, things like that, even on a weekend. You know, because it would be positioned, obviously, there permanently, any time that we would have to travel in front of a school. It, it would affect it, you know, it, it would be relatively minimal, but it, it would have a negative effect on response times. And lastly, uh, the Music Downtown. So, I, I researched as much as I could. I went through every single line on him in all four of my departments, and it's not budgeted in my department. Uh, the last time I was actively involved in the Music Downtown was in twenty-eighteen, where I got a, uh, I had a media company come out and submit a proposal and a quote for, for basically the bare minimum to start this off, which you can expand on the system and, 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 you know, move farther and farther away from the, the source, the headquarters, if you will. Uh, and their quote was thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Correct. Like I said, this was in twenty-eighteen. Uh, I believe Mr. Ibanez and Mike uh, have located the, the, the funds that have been allocated for this project. Uh, correct me if I'm not mistaken, guys.
That's, that's incorrect. Um, we we were, um, when we were looking through the budget, we did not identify a specific allocation towards the speakers. It was through, for programs, for different programs. So, we don't have anything in the budget.
We did approve it.
So, we, we can continue that research. From what I understand from our finance director, that, that money hasn't been identified in the budget at this time.
That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for your report. Archie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Well, after after a, a six-month delay and sixteen months overall, wow, uh, we're very excited to, to finally be able to show you our, uh, our new ladder truck.
Beautiful.
It is.
That's nice.
A very nice truck. Uh, last, last week, myself, our city mechanic and another staff traveled back to Nebraska. Uh, we did the final inspection uh, back at the Smeele Plant, which is in uh, Snyder, Nebraska, basically in the middle of cornfields. Very strange thing, you're driving down a rural road and with cornfields all around, and then you pull right up to this big manufacturing plant. So, we spent several days back there going over it with a, a fine-tooth comb and uh, you know, found some things. They're gonna fix those things. Uh, they were all minor issues, and so with a little bit of luck, uh, they'll get those two things, those twenty or so small items fixed. And uh, they'll, it'll be shipped out. So, we might see it at the end of the week here in town, uh, but more likely probably some point next week. So. There are miles except for uh, the work we did on it, the driving around we did with it.
New fire truck smell. That's amazing.
Yeah. Yeah. It's interesting being up in that bucket a hundred feet in the air.
A hundred feet.
It, it was, it was a unique experience. So, uh, when we get it here, we, we still have, you know, quite a bit of work to do with radio installs, equipment installs, things like that, and a significant amount of training for our department. So, we, we'll have a few more months to go, but we look forward to getting it into service. Thank you.
That update. Right. Police Commander Garza.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Parks Community Services.
Hey, Robert, to remember city council. I did want to follow up on the, the marquee I'm gonna call in Rose Avenue was budgeted. Uh, right now, we are evaluating the quotes. And, but by next week, have some information together to become a council item, so.
I know I've had a lot of people tell me, oh, you know, I used to be able to see when uh, T-ball practice was gonna start, you know, with the banners on the park at, at Lincoln, but with our, you know, veterans statues, it's inappropriate to have that there. It'd be nice to have that reader board that the veteran, I believe the veterans are funding that, right? Post twelve?
Uh, we'll be working with the veterans post twelve. They've actually put a lot of money into the veterans and working in the playground, so uh, that's just a conversation they did have with staff that they would like to contribute, so.
And that's not the mayor's project, by the way. That's the city project.
Anyway, um, next item's a little emotional. I do wear my tie, my golf tie. I look forward to development of a ten acres park, uh, securing additional thirty-three acres of parkland, the fireworks show, many things to come forward. On November sixth nineteen ninety-five, I was introduced at a city council meeting that was held at the senior center. Uh, didn't need the additional seating due to my introductions. Uh, there was a discussion on the new city hall being built at Lincoln Park, so uh, that was my first, welcome to Selma. I wanted to thank our city manager Fernando Santillon for meeting with me twice for very productive and meetings and my discussions with him. I truly thank all the city councils, all my coworkers. I've been here a long time. Every day I supervise the most important community in which we've lived in. My wife. Fireman. We moved here nineteen ninety-eight. I worked for seven city managers. Five intern city managers. And great people in recreation. We may not have been a very spectacular recreation farm, but we've been consistent. That was better than when I took over, and I'm sure we better when somebody else takes over. I worked part-time for three months with the city of I say after graduating from state. I was twenty-four. Had a dream of becoming a rec supervisor, maybe twenty-eight, twenty-nine. I applied for the city really, got second within four weeks. Got a phone call, can you start Monday? The other person left. And so, I worked part-time for two weeks because I didn't think it was fair to say I said to leave a two-week notice. I began working here after five years of city really, on October nineteenth nineteen ninety-five. With that said, thirty-three years later, I can announce my retirement from the city of Selma. Hard time work, keep busy. I'm not the type of person to sit home. Selma Care, Selma High, Doug, Little League, lots of different groups I've always worked for and volunteered for. Probably see me partner village doing things too. I can't say thank you enough to everybody. The good and those in-between times. Been a great ride. I deeply want to thank Selma. Want nothing but the best for things to happen. And I told Fernando, city manager, I'm so used to calling first names. It friends will say we were in Todd's Recreation, you call people by first names. And so, most professors like go to another class, you have to get used to. But in Recreation, it was just, that's how we were trained, so become friends. I feel really good at the parks on the books. It's something I've tried for a long time. I told, I feel really good that the city council asked me to do some research on the community center. I drove by after Prime Village last Thursday night and see about thirty cars in front of the senior center from rehearsing for next play. And so, I visualized the community center where kids are coming out at eight o'clock, parents picking up from volleyball, basketball, you know, indoor soccer. And so, but I told, I was really happy that the city council has it on the map and the parks on the map. I can't go anywhere without somebody recognizing my, my cars, my trucks. So, I, I know parks are important to everybody, and so I feel really good, and I think it's, I know it's gonna happen. And so, with that, my son Scotty, here soon to be fireman, my wife Rosa. Move on to different things, different area of my life. So, I do thank you, everybody here, everybody in the, in the audience too, in the community. So, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I will be leaving Sacramento in a few minutes, so trying to get you guys some money. We are, nothing, I'm not gonna quit till, I'm not gonna give up early and say, these are my last days, so. I thank you, guys.
Well, thanks for letting us know, and thank you for your service. And uh, you know, they say judge people, people by your family and how amazing your family is, and it looks like you have an amazing family. So, you heard that, and he said, oh, no problem. I was just in one today. Thanks for your service, and thank you for your service, Director. You done a great job. Thank you so much. City's gonna miss you big time. I know we'll get to see you several more times, but thanks for your announcement. Okay, with that, we'll move on to um, council reports. Um, Council Member Mendoza Navarro.
I felt like I missed something. I said, I didn't check my emails after, afternoon, so I was like, oh, no, what did I miss? Well, I'm really sad um, that you're gonna be leaving this, but I know been here for a long time, and, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. I haven't attended all of the homeless coalition meetings, but you know, it's been great. I was just talking about the community center earlier today with my daughter because uh, I was telling her how the old building was there. It was the old right, the, the older building, the older little house that was there. What was it?
Women's Club.
The Women's Club, thank you. Okay, further, yeah, I remember because we had um, a wedding there, a wedding reception there. And um, so she was asking me about something that happened at the wedding, and, and so I said, oh, yeah, you know, this and this, but didn't know I was gonna talk about it today. Um, but I'm sad, so um, but I'm happy for you because I know, I wish I could retire, but it's, I'm not there yet. I just have a couple of things. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Crab Fest, very first time ever. Um, I don't like crab, but I actually tasted it, and it was delicious. It, it actually, I tasted a little bit, it was really tasty. So, that was really nice. It was nice to see, you know, more people. Um, there was only one table that was not seated, but everybody had, you know, their tables. And it was nice to see that, I guess, people decorate their own tables. I didn't know that. I tell you, I, I've never attended. Um, I also attended the annual Selma Catholic Women's Club Dinner. We joined with the Kingsburg Women's Club. And so, once a year, right around February, we meet together and have that dinner. My husband and I went to the Home and Garden Show on um, Friday, the first day that, that uh, that they started. And, and I already shared this with city manager, um, but there was a company there. It's called Foldem, and I'll give this to you. Foldem, they're like containers, but they serve purposes for first respond, responder housing, shelter for the unhoused, medical clean rooms, job site offices, and just pretty much like their, their big thing too is like transitional housing. You know, so I, and they're actually really nice. I'll pass this around. Um, they don't, they're not eyesores because that was my first thing was, oh, is it gonna be an eyesore? And they weren't. They were really, really nice. Uh, so I, I did talk to one of the gentlemen there, and um, I did invite them. I, I told them I would forward their information over to you for um, any presentations that we may have regarding homeless. So, um, that is it on that. But on a personal note, I wanted to wish my son, my youngest, uh, a happy twentieth birthday. I have all my kids in their twenties. Seven-year-old, twenties, or twenty-eight-year-old, twenty-six-year-old, and now a twenty-year-old. Um, and I was, as I was sharing with council earlier, is his generation was healing from nine eleven, and his generation couldn't graduate because we went into pandemic. So, that was a couple of years ago. So, his generation has um, really made a historical landmark, so just pray um, that they become, you know, productive adults and that they're actually, you know, us their historical um, events that they
Council Member Trill.
Mike, I'd like to commend you for all the hard work you've done, and I don't want to say that we'll be missing you because I know that you'll be involved. Uh, you, once you're in it, you're in it, right? And uh, so I'm sure that I'll be seeing you around, and I really, really admire all the hard work you've done and everything you've been there. You know, sports are very important. That's what actually, one of the one of the items you'd rather, you know, you, you want your kids getting involved in the community, and you were really instrumental in that. I want to commend you for that. So, I wish you luck. I wish you everything, and hopefully, we can fill cross paths and work together. Uh, second note is I attended the crab feed. Uh, it was very, again, like Chamber does, they do it really, really nice was um, I had to leave early, had a commitment prior, but um, you know, we had some tables that I really commend you guys for the hard work you guys always do for that. On a different note, I'd like an update in the future in regards to the police department, the wrecked building that I've been, I've asked a while back, so. You know, I, you put a bush there or something, and we're not gonna fix it right now. You know, so when I pass by on the scare, you know? It's a joke, uh, you know, I, I took a lot of hitting on that, that building, so I'd love to see it get fixed, you know? The last one I, 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 I want to share because I, I really find, you know, we start talking about what we do in our community and what, you know, how we address our community and how active our community loves each other. I want to share something. Um, me and my wife walk our dogs. I walk my dogs probably twice a week. She walks them every day. And all our neighbors talk to each other, and we had a neighbor uh, just recently pass away, and I didn't know how much uh, the neighbors rallied around him for the last two, three months. And I spoke to the wife, and she's living back to Tennessee. She's selling her house, and it was so funny because one of my neighbors, she's a, she's a nurse, and she rallied around, and a lot of neighbors were rallying around, and we were working together, and they were working together. When I say we, I didn't have no part. But I, I, I felt that the, the conversation Sunday was really, really emotional, and this, this neighbor of mine, uh, you know, left us in January. I'll just say, my wife, you call him Stick Willie, Little Willie, you know, Eddie, and uh, he left us and his wife's living back to Tennessee, and she told me that the house was sold, and there'll be a family coming from Colorado to live here, and they're, they're, they're veterans, and they're gonna have kids here and, you know, retired people. But, you know, I, it really tells you what kind of community this is when you get people in neighborhoods rallying around each other. And uh, I really, really want you guys to know that, you know, when we start talking about when we have differences, we truly have people in our community that really care about each other. And I, and that's, and if there's anything that we want to get from this is that, you know, we can have discussions and, and separations, and but at the end of the day, we do have truly beautiful families living in our neighborhood, so we should respect them all and respect everybody individually. So, with that, I leave you guys, but I want you guys to know that, you know, the conversation I had on this Sunday with all my neighbors was a real beautiful uh, conversation because it pertained to an individual that was our community for almost twelve years. He left us, and there'll be some more people coming from, um, you know, from somewhere else, and they love Selma, so we gotta just keep going and respecting everybody. Okay?
Hey, Councilmember Kara.
Well, this is like a bittersweet for me. I've attended the retirement of Ben Munoz of S K F. He's a general manager. And now Mike's news. Mike, you're not going anywhere. We're gonna see you everywhere. But I know your dream is to see that park. And no matter what happens, it's gonna happen. I want to assure you of that. So, with that, I mean, that was pretty much all I have, and um, along with you and the rest of our directors, that you guys do a fabulous job. And it shows, and we're gonna continue, you know, moving the city forward. So, thank you for everybody that works so hard and our staff and people that are, you know, just volunteers as well. Thank you for everything you guys do. Really appreciate it.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes. Yeah, Michael, we're gonna miss you, especially me, because I worked with you so many, under so many different hats, and you do owe me money, right? So, I, also, I was at the, the crab feed. Um, I was just, it was just so neat to see our So I also, I was at the, the crab feed. Um, I was just, it was just so neat to see our people, community, people were there and they were enjoying themselves. It was just so long time coming. And it was felt really good after that feed that people are finally coming together and enjoying themselves again. Because we've been a long haul with this COVID the last couple of years. And so I think hopefully from now on, we'll continue on that. Uh, I was at the Chinatown Parade this weekend. There is a Chinatown still in Fresno. It's not the best area to be in, but we do have a parade. The grand marshal was the Fresno, uh, police chief. Uh, so we don't, it's not a long, long parade. It's just round a few blocks, but it was just, it's something that, uh, one of my board members from my Chinese association, he, he runs it every year. And, and they had like about twenty entries, even horses at the end. Luckily I was in the truck in the front part. That's good. It's like the changes, you know, of life, you know, and we still do it every year, even in spite of everything that's there. You gotta go back sometimes because these people have been there for a long time. So, so some, there's some things that you have to continue doing. Uh, also my Central Valley Lions, this Lions Club is having their Chili Bertie fundraiser a week from today. If you guys want some tickets, let me know. Uh, it's going to be at Cho's Cantina that day. You can come in, pick up your meal, uh, just let me know how many you need. So I can have it well caught for you. Twelve dollars a plate is a really good, good, uh, recipes from one of my lion members, mother's recipe homemade. And this is the only time you ever see chili Bertie cook in woks. Okay? There's no, nobody can claim that and we, I, I can claim that. And then another thing we can claim is you never cook ten pounds of Spanish rice in a rice cooker ever either. So we have, have done, have a down pack. So, you know, this is a really good meal. So you guys need one. Let me know. Okay? All right. That's all my selling deal.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mike. Way to go. Starting your, uh, your next phase is going to be interesting to see what you do, how many Giants games you attend, all those, uh, projects. There you go. That's where you're headed. And, uh, you know, the city will, I, 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 uh, know that the city will move forward on that, um, community center. Because really that is the future. The park's going to happen. And the community center after that, it's been part of the capital improvement project. You know, when I got here, we didn't even have a capital improvement project list. We didn't have that. And that was ten years ago. We are the magical ten years all the time. We didn't have that. We've since developed that and, and the community center, um, is, is absolutely front and center on that capital improvement project list. I hope we stick to that as a city. Um, the Second Chance Animal Shelter will be having its first, um, the vaccine clinic, rabies vaccine clinic. We have a board member over there, Stuart Scoglan. And that'll be from nine to one on Saturday morning at the animal shelter. It's going to be only one this year. So, um, there won't be, you know, three as that the shelter has had in the past. It hasn't had any the last couple of years because of COVID. So that'll be happening Saturday. It's a low-cost clinic. It's, uh, twenty dollars a shot. And, you know, anybody who's been to the vet knows you don't get through that door without an appointment fee and a shot fee, and it's very expensive. So it's reasonable alternative and the city will be there to renew your animal licenses as well. Um, the, uh, speaking of animals, we had a mountain lion in our neighborhood, two doors down from me while I was outside. And, uh, I wondered why, why is the neighbor calling frantically, you know? And it turns out it was because there was a mountain lion on the, on the loose. So it was very interesting. Um, he, he went west and I went east. So that was a, that was a good thing. Glad that moved in different directions on that. And he was subdued by fishing game and by PD. Thanks to PD for coming. And I understand you told people after that, I was out very early. So you weren't even around at that time, but after the fact, after you learned about the mountain lion, you were telling people to get off the sidewalk there and stay in their houses. So thank, thank you for that. Um, I was at a cog meeting this week, last week, last Thursday in person, as we've related earlier. And this council of governments, one of the issues was the regional housing needs allowance numbers. And it turns out that, uh, cog is the metropolitan planning organization that allocates these numbers that the state gives them. The state says, here are your numbers. This is what you have to be zoned for in the cities. Allocate them as you will. So, uh, all the cities got their allocation, including the unincorporated county, but the thinking was, well, the unincorporated parts, they don't really have the infrastructure to support new housing. So let's not give them the, the, the housing units. Um, but they have to go somewhere. The state's not going to take them back. So sixty-three percent of them went to the city of Fresno. And the rest of them went to the other cities, including Selma. And at that cog meeting, the mayor of Fresno said, we're fifty-two percent, fifty-three percent of Fresno County population. Why are we getting sixty-three percent of the unincorporated, um, county regional housing needs assessment numbers? And the answer was, well, that's just what was decided. So it was good. Um, and the question was asked, well, that doesn't seem really fair for the cities. So council of governments, um, did away with the cap because it was a cap that allocated those excess numbers over that cap to the additional cities. And, um, cog gave directions, council of governments gave directions to, um, put those, those units back in the unincorporated areas, which reduced the burden on city of Selma and other cities by at least thirty-seven units, which is, um, I think an achievement and I think it's fair and city of Fresno certainly got tagged with that as well as the other cities. And it wasn't a huge number, but it was an issue of, of fairness there. Uh, at the Fresno County Rural Transit Authority meeting, it was on open session that, um, the issue of Harris Construction potentially bringing legal action against F C R T A over the Selma maintenance facility that's upcoming, which is large and it's eleven million dollar maintenance facility, probably the biggest public works project we've had in Selma, um, that's coming. Um, and Harris Construction did not get the bid and they were threatening legal action. And Zoom Walt did get the bid. They're both local, local contractors. And the president of Zoom Walt was there along with, um, another speaker, um, no one from Harris. And it was decided at the meeting on an open vote, um, a unanimous majority vote to move forward with the Zoom Walt bill bid. So that, that maintenance facility, which will create jobs, it'll create industries. It's where the county vehicles will be electrified. That's going to go forward sooner than later, which is going to push our city forward. And that's a really good deal. And as, uh, our director of public work, Shane Farrell mentioned, the generosity of F C R T A, not only do they pump two hundred thousand dollars into our general fund a year, uh, they also are providing security for the bus facility for the Selma Unified School District and for the, where the city parks its large vehicles as well. So that's another, um, another point of generosity there. And I'm very grateful to that. With that, we'll move on to public input. Do we have any more, um, community input at this point? Do we have anybody on the phone or on Zoom? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everybody for coming out. We're adjourned.